Hello everybody! Thank you Shy. I think the music is a little fun myself. This is, um, I'll take it down just a little bit so I can talk over it though, sorry. This is some royalty-free music I bought for myself while I was sitting at home last year. And I bought it with the intention of using it for videos and then it occurred to me that I can also stream with it. So yay! So there we go. Welcome! Alright, and my camera, is my camera okay? Can tell how much prep I did for this here. Okay. So hi, welcome everybody! So tonight is a little bit different as you might have seen from the stream name. Normally a "Learn with Me" would be one week on in the calendar, but tonight is going to be our "Learn with Me", and that's basically a fancy way of saying, "I'm trying some stuff for the first time and some of it I'm going to work on live while we're here." And so yeah, you get to see me learn and "Learn with Me" and we can talk about it. And if you are thinking, "Mmm, I'll bet you", you think in your suspicious mind, that this is just Laura's way of weaseling out of doing a whole new stream topic the night before a conference and she's just trying to have something to do, like, you know, and palm this off on us, I would just like to point out that if that's what you're thinking, then, "What in the world can that be?" "Oh, sorry, don't know what that was. Let's get back to work." So, okay. Yes, okay, I seek her, how you doing? So, okay. In all seriousness, I really am doing some new things this week and they are stretching me and I could tell they're stretching me because I don't want to do them. So with that, yeah, let's get to work. So, here we go. So one of the things today, Vella went live. If you remember, we talked about Kindle Vella. It has been the softest of soft launches. Pretty much everyone I've heard from who is not writing for it says they have only heard about it from people who are writing for it. And I think that's a pretty fair assessment. Amazon has not really pushed this at all. So, I mean, obviously, it's technically in beta and, you know, I'm sure they're trying to, they're letting us work out all the bugs and everything, but it is, it has been a little frustrating, like, you know, if you push really hard to get product ready and, um, and then, like, they didn't even tell us what day. We've just kind of been watching, we think, we think it's gonna be this week. So, I did get an email late last week saying, "Oh, this is your last chance to get stuff up before launch, so we figured it was gonna happen this week." But, yeah, so, um, but anyway, yeah, so I have a, I have a cereal up on Vella now, so that is the poet's eye. And that has been, um, it's been a ride, let me tell you, because originally, I don't know if I said this on the stream or not, but originally I was planning on putting a different story up for my cereal and I determined it just needs too much work. It's, um, it's got good bones. I will probably salvage it and do something with it when I'm not on this much of a deadline. And honestly, I probably could have put it up, but it's not as good as I can do, right? And I don't want to be, I don't want to just slap some stuff up there, so. Yeah, okay, it's like only Amazon could get away with that. Yeah, absolutely, yeah. And again, they're, they're, they're just doing a soft launch and working out the bugs and like technically I know everything that's going on, but on the other hand, I feel just a little bit, if you want us to really take this seriously and give you our best work, you need to treat us like we deserve, we deserve our best work. So, um, so yeah, so one of the things that I will be doing tonight is writing a newsletter to my, uh, readers, newsletter subscribers, that explains that, you know, hey, by the way, Vella exists, this is what it is, you probably haven't seen it, but here's where to find it. And here's a new story that I have on there. But, because, uh, if you know me, I do not like to be Amazon-exclusive. I prefer to have my stories available to a wide market. And because we didn't really know much about Vella and, you know, it has the potential to be amazing because the web serial story market is huge. But, you know, as we're seeing, they're not really pushing this really hard. And eggs, basket, you know, all the things. So I wanted my cereal to be available wide too. And in order to have it on Amazon, it has to also be behind paywall somewhere else. And this, the short version, pushing everything down, is, "This finally pushed me over the edge to go ahead and launch a Patreon", which is not at all terrifying. That's a lie, it actually is terrifying. And, yeah, so officially, I'm launching my Patreon tonight as well, so I'm also going to be putting that in my newsletter and then basically, "Hey guys, you have a choice. You can read this on Vella on Amazon or you can read this on my Patreon." And, yeah, so because this is a "For Creators", lots to launch, oh my gosh, I know, like, there's a little bit of excitement, there's a lot of trepidation. I think, I think, I'm hoping that they won't like start to balance out over a little bit, I don't know, like, yeah. So, anyway, um, yeah, so lots to launch, which is, of course, I decided, I mean, I didn't decide, Amazon decided when Vella was going live and so that determined when my Patreon was going live because I wasn't, you know, I wanted that to be equally accessible. And of course, it all happens like that night before I leave for a conference, right? My first conference back, as far as live events go, which means normally I'm an extremely fast, extremely efficient packer, but since I haven't done a live event in, you know, a year and a half or whatever it is at this point, you know, my, my things that are normally kept constantly in a semi-packed mode or, you know, the boxes that I usually keep for, for travel have at this point all been used for other things or been recycled or whatever. So yeah, packing's taking a little bit longer than it normally does. Whee! So, anyway, so this is what we're doing tonight. I had a point, where was I going before I went off on that trail? Amazon Patreon, something. I don't know, it's gone. Okay, if it comes back, be there. Anyway, so these are things that I'm going to be doing tonight and, um, oh, I know what I was, I was gonna say, because this is a chat specifically for creating and the business of creating, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the business behind the scenes of this, so you know exactly what I'm doing. Because this is a "Learn with Me" and we're gonna find out how this works. And I'm doing it openly in public because then at least if it works very poorly, someone else can save time and mistakes later. Yeah, yeah, this is good for me, this is good. Okay, um, so I did the math and I actually, if you were on the stream when I did the talk about Vella, I offered the spreadsheet to everyone who was on the stream there. If you, if anybody wants it who did not pick it up at that time, I actually have it on my online store for a dollar, just to, you know, here, use this and I can get a little bit back from making that. So, I'm taking, putting that up, so, um, it does all the calculations and I set it up because the way Vella runs, there's a little bit of flex because the tokens sell for different amounts of money depending on where you purchase them. And then also for how the tokens are worth different amounts depending on how, what size package of tokens you buy. So, and I'm changing the actual numbers for easier math, but if you buy 10 tokens for a dollar or you buy 10 tokens for $2, yeah, so depending on where you purchase them, or you can buy 10 tokens for a dollar or you can buy 30 tokens for $2 depending on the size package. And so all of those tokens are going to be worth different amounts of money. So rather than making four spreadsheets, which is I think at least what it would take to, you know, four, four ways to calculate that, I just set everything to calculate for the lowest value and then any surprises will be pleasant surprises. So that is the Vella spreadsheet that I built. And what that works out to is if somebody purchases tokens for the best bulk purchase rate, which of course you would do if you want to read a lot of cereals, you know, that, make the smart shopper, shop, right? And if they purchase those on the Apple app, the, uh, which Vella has launched in iOS as an app, but not in Android as an app. So anybody using an app to read right now is purchasing through iOS. Insert token amount joke here, thank you, thank you. And, so, anyway, if the worst-case scenario is that, you know, while Amazon advertises that Vella authors get 50% of their revenue, that number would actually be 20%, not 50. Thanks, Apple, you're a big help. Apple plus Amazon equals authors getting 20%. Honestly, that's not a great deal. And I was only really interested in Vella from a discovery standpoint anyway, just because I think that's, that's a way to reach readers that I have never read before, so that's what I want to use it for, but also 20% is pretty, not a great deal, okay? And, and let me get, like, obviously if I were, if I were selling a novel to a traditional publishing house for, uh, it's probably a paperback run, they fronted everything and all of that, I might get 20% of the royalties. That's with a traditional publishing deal though, and that's with a lot more upfront costs than pushing out a web serial. So, um, also, like, this is why, this is why I'm an indie author because I get better royalties than 20% anyway. So, so yeah, sorry, it's not really that attractive of a deal, which is one of the reasons that I also wanted to have that same cereal available for wide so that savvy readers, because sometimes people do. Somebody asked me yesterday, "Do you get more money if I buy from here or by here? You know, which one will support you better?" Thank you, by the way, we love those questions. So, anyway, so I wanted it to be wide and Patreon is platform agnostic. People can read Apple, Android, Linux, pigeons, whatever. And I get basically 97% of the revenue, give or take a little bit of fudging, you know, depending on tiers and individual things, but frankly, a much, much, much better deal. So, that is, uh, that is part of why I'm making it available on both platforms. I mean, there's a number of reasons that are going into that, but honestly, I'm hoping that Patreon pays me better. We'll find out, okay? This is gonna be, this is gonna be an adventure, I don't know. I'll report back and I'll be like, "Hey, this worked out great", or I'll be like, "This was a terrible idea, glad I tried it so you don't have to." So, um, so that's where we are and that's what we're doing. Where did our music go? I was, uh, I was, I thought I had music set up to play all night because I really wanted, there we go. Something fun to go, there we go. Okay, so, if you guys have questions on any of this or if you want to discuss any of this, I'm all down for the discussion while I work. And if you want to be like, "What were you thinking?", that's also valid discussion. The answer might be, "I don't know." So, um, so let's, uh, let's go ahead and get started, so. Actually, let me see if I can bring up, where is? Okay. So here's Atticus. This is what I actually switched over to to do my final serial formatting. And, um, I want to break up some parts a little bit here. I just inserted a chapter and I wasn't paying attention to where I did it, so let me go find that. Wonder where I put that? It could be anywhere, it could be at the end, you know what, let's go up here and just make another one, I'll find it later. There we go, chapter, okay. And I'm gonna unnumber this one. So now it is just another job and so now this is kind of a start of a clump of episodes. And so I'm gonna start with, you know, these five chapters, then we're gonna flashback to some key information and then we're going to move on forward again, so I've got these set up in different parts. And this is gonna be, so, I put this, I shifted this into Atticus so I could do some, some quick and easy dragging around because I did reorder a bunch of things while I was going through this and it's not, it's not done being revised, but I did get about the first, I think, 15 or 16 episodes up, so that's a good start. And, oh, so, uh, ShyRedFox, who spends a lot of time on World Anvil and is way better at World Anvil than me, let me actually see if I can share this. This is where, World Anvil is where I'm sharing it with my Patreons, my Patreon will unlock the manuscript on World Anvil. So I'm currently loading this to, loading it directly to Vella and loading it to World Anvil as I finish revisions, which means some copy and pasting, but it's not that big a deal. But then I will have everything collected and neatly organized in Atticus, so when the cereal is finished, I can just hit that Export EPUB button and now it's in ebook form and ready to go out. Yeah, I'm really trying to get better at using World Anvil. I figured at this point, I am now an eternal sage, which is just really fun to say, so I should probably start using some features. We'll see. Yeah, I, basically every time I go to World Anvil though, it's like, "That's a thing you can do? I should learn how to do that." It's where I'm not as dumb as I appear when I go over there, but it's just not something I've been hanging out picking up all the features. Yeah, I guess, I got hit with the lifetime deal, I mean, I really did, they, they tempted me hard. It was a moment of weakness, you know, it worked. So, anyway, so I'm going to set this up that when I do this in the future, there's going to be a really cool picture that I can drop in here. There's just a lot to learn, thank you. I was looking at somebody's, um, oh gosh, what was it? He had some amazing formatting for, uh, they were like spoiler boxers so you could click to open the text, but they were doing really amazing things with much more than just revealed spoiler text. And I was just like, "That's so cool, I will do that one day", but not this week because this week is full of all the things, so. Yeah, I thought they did do Eternal Sanctum, did I make that up in my head? I don't know. Okay, um, so, oh, I know what it's doing, it's because I have, you know what, let me just throw an actual picture in here. Because I have drop caps on for my, drop caps on for my opening chapter, so that's why it's trying to embiggen that opening bracket. Thanks, guys, I see what you're doing, but we're okay. So let me just go find a picture. There we go. Here's a photo I took of an amulet to use while I was writing. There we go. And... This should be a title in here, I make that up. Yeah, that should totally be showing, huh? Let me just get that up there. Okay, well, I will mess with that later. But I can just have those parts in there and I'm just trying to keep things a little bit clean so that when I do come back to the, to do final formatting on this, it will be all neat and ready to go. Farm Boys are a recurring, not really an occurring theme, but our main character in this is your classic farm boy who gets stuck saving the world and he didn't actually plan on that, except that, you know, it's a little bit, little bit of a twist there because, of course there is, so. Okay. Um, alright, so, want to hop over to... Oh, sorry, I need to... There we go, need to get OBS to keep up with me. And, yeah, so here we are over at, are you still with me OBS? No, you're not, oh, come on! Alright, I didn't realize this is going to be so hard to keep up here. There we go, okay. So here we are over at World Anvil and I've got the, this is not the greatest book cover ever. It's really not, but it was free and I whipped it together myself and I will upgrade it as we go. So, just so we know. But here I've got my, um, my thing set up, so, hopefully now, the thing that is a little bit odd is that it, the way the manuscripts work, as far as I can tell, is it only, it only counts unlocked words, which I'm hoping, oh no, it actually has more now, that did not update for days. So I figured it was just, okay, but I do have about 35,000 words uploaded, which was good because I didn't want people to look at that and think these were only like, you know, 20-word chapters or something. So, so that is good. And I am still taking tag suggestions because I'm not good at tags and I will completely take, if anybody has tag suggestions for me, I would love to do, love to do that, okay? Alright, so let's get back to... And then, um, if I, also after I finish the, finish writing my newsletter, I will hop over and work on some World Anvil. Summer camp prompts, depending on where we are with our time. Yeah, tags are hard, I feel like if I lived more in the cereal world or especially in the fanfic world, I would be better at tags. And so I need to pull more, I actually went to a couple of friends who hang out more in the fanfic world and I'm like, "You speak AO3, help me with my tags", but, um, I need to, I need to sit down and drill more with them, so. Alright. Let me take the music up a little bit because it's just gonna be me typing here for a little while. And, we'll see how this goes. Fanfic tags are, I mean, they're crazy, they're hilarious. They're also like their own language, which is why I know I'm not good at them, but, um, yeah, a lot of fun. Oh my gosh, typing. Let me hop over, where did we, where did, where did I leave? Oh my gosh, I have too many windows open, where's, where's Vella? Here we go. Okay, OBS, can you work with me? OBS, you're killing me, keep up, over here. There we go, okay. If you come and you look up here, there's story details and there's your ASIN, that will take you to your, uh, why is it saying, oh, I don't know, okay. That will, that will take you to where, um, this is the front end of Vella, so you can, uh, your, your actual story. So, oh, and I got some thumbs up, hooray, that's good. Thumbs up, uh, we are told, nobody quite knows yet, makes your story more discoverable, so, uh, Amazon's gonna start prioritizing and featuring the stories that have thumbs, so. So yeah, if you're sitting here with nothing to do, please hop over there and give me a thumbs up. So, okay. So I'm gonna come back to my, come on OBS, work with me, work with me. There we go. You also get to see this is what my editing process looks like. Wow. This is how my brain works. Oh, hello. Thanks for stopping by, LJ. Let me see if I can. Get this all, there we go. Get this all in the window for you. In case you want to critique my, my newsletter as I work on it. Yeah, how, how it goes the stream or the writing. So yeah, earlier I confessed that today's stream is a lot less. Informative than usual. I really hope that usually it's informative. And a lot more, let's just watch Laura work on things. So yeah, we're pretty, we're pretty chill over here and I am. Trying to launch both my new Kindle Vella cereal, which just went live a few hours ago. And my new Patreon, which is technically live, but I just haven't told anybody about it yet. So I am right now writing my newsletter to announce both of these things. So. There we go. That's, this is the plan. What are you guys working on? Hey, thank you very much. Appreciate the congrats. Trip check that link because paranoia. Working on book two, that is always a thing. Oh, Grace is over there just reading my episodes. Okay, Grace gets the gold star. She's my favorite. Okay. So. Yay. Welcome, Grace. I hadn't seen you drop in. Glad you're here. Yeah, words are words. You know, sometimes we just put the words down so that we have something to fix later. That is. That is a legit thing. Oh, good. That is the corrected link. So let's do that. Yeah, I want to give. Kayla a shout out. Kayla's not usually on the stream, but. She's not usually in the chat, but she's working on a story for submission, which will be her first. Attempt for professional publication, I think. And so she's gonna submit later this week, but. Yeah, I was working with her last night and like, okay, this is, you have a solid first draft. Now these are things we can work. And she sent me a snippet today of her revisions, like light years up, like way to go, leap ahead. So sometimes we just need to get stuff down so that we have something to make better. Yes. So, all right. Yeah, can't get the book written without words, absolutely freaking literally. Yes, Grace, the cost structure is entirely based upon length and, and it, you can. Tokens cost more or less depending on whether you buy them on Amazon or in an app and in what. Bulk units you buy them, whether you buy like ten at a time or a thousand at a time, or you know, whatever. So, so yeah, the price structure is a little bit. Like I see where they're going with it. I don't know, I don't know enough about, like I don't follow that many. Serial platforms to know what the general trends are. I know some of them are just membership and some of them are paid per episode and I just don't. Know all the details, so I don't know what they're trying to compete with. So. But yeah, that's it. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping. This thing she's submitting to is gonna have some stiff competition. I mean, I'm submitting to the same thing, so you're not, no, I'm kidding. But no, I'm really hoping that she's totally prepared that her first submission. May not be professionally accepted, but doesn't matter. She's got a polished piece, right? And she can submit it to the next one. So yes, very proud. Format is definitely addictive. Okay, okay, good. So yeah, I mean, I totally see. You know, you, it's easy to do, to go piece field, right? And I get that. It's definitely a. A concept that could work and obviously has been working. It's been doing extremely well in other parts of the world, which is why. I think somebody looked up and said, hey, I want, what, are they making that much money? I want one. I totally think that's what happened. So yeah, we'll just see, you know, if it's. If, if they, if their soft launch works and if they kick it into high gear, we'll see where it goes and either. It will work well on, or I'll have my Patreon. One of the two. We'll find out how it goes. So how many, how many stories are you checking out over there, Grace? Since you will, you will be our eye of the reader today. Are you looking at other, other stories? What are you, what are you seeing? Give, give us the, give us the on the guy, on the, on the ground view. Can be our on the spot news reporter. They make it easy to click to the next one and buy it. There's literally no other option. Awesome. Actually, little hands come out and grab the phone and just glue your fingers to the screen and you're stuck. That'd be great. So, no, just mine. Thank you. Thank you. You have the best taste. So. Yeah, so sneaky tip, there are three episodes available on. Amazon Vella to, to, to preview. All stories have three episodes available. And, but I think right now there are actually four unlocked on World Anvil. So before that gets fixed, just saying. All right, let me. Let me hop over and I have to delete this stream anyway when I'm done, so I can say that. Delete the, and then hide the evidence. All right. Okay. Let me get back to work and get this done. I'm gonna show you my, my email tricks when I'm, when I'm ready to go. So. Back to work. Can you guys hear music? Is it just, there were, there were four free, there were four free. Oh, interesting. Okay. Yeah, they told us there would be three free, so who knows? On Amazon via browser. Okay. Yeah, so did the music disappear for you guys? Oh, you hear music. Great. Why are you hearing music and I'm not hearing music? Is the music too loud? I just cranked it up really loud for you guys, but I can't hear it. That's hilarious. Okay, I'm glad you can hear it. It has completely disappeared. Okay, all right. Oh, everybody can hear music and there's more people than I knew were here. Oh, hi, thanks. Welcome, people. Yeah, let me know if the music's too loud. Since I can't hear it, I could be, you know, just absolutely burying you guys in music. I don't know. So let me know. I'm gonna go back and write this newsletter. So let me get that done. Then I'll show you my newsletter tricks. Oh, good. Thank you. Thank you. I like that. Good to know. I could hear music earlier, so now I'm just like, why did it disappear? I don't know. I'll work on that later. Oh, episode five was awesome. Thank you. Now I just have to remember which one that was. Thank you. All right. Okay, so I'm gonna actually show you guys this, because I wanna share this little tip. And then I can come back and actually polish this newsletter. So. If I come over here to mailtester.com, this is a great tool if you are sending email newsletters, which of course you are. Hence, let me just hop over here and I'm gonna. Save my draft and then I'm gonna come over here and pretend that it's polished and ready to go, which it is most certainly not. But. Please load. Come on, you're not, you're not struggling that hard here. Here we go. Okay. So here we have a test send this campaign. Your, whatever newsletter service you're using should be. Should have that feature. So I'm gonna come over here to mailtester.com and copy this one time use. Email, bring it back over here and then test send this newsletter. So that's gonna go out. Then I'm just gonna hop right back over here and check my score. There are several services that do this, but this is my favorite. Not least because it has the best little animations and illustrations. So the boat is gonna row across the screen. And when it reaches the palm tree, then it will give me its evaluation and assessment of the newsletter, which I have put together. Wow, nine point nine. This is, these are the scores we go for. All right. So, and then it will tell me what. Is, is a problem if I am looking at an email that is more likely to get dropped into spam or shoved into a promo tab or something like that. Realistically, nothing can guarantee, like I'm still gonna end up in some people's promo tabs anyway. But. Yeah, this is super helpful. I love one of these. This is, you know, this, this really has helped me to get more of my, now. You know, I'm still looking at. Roughly thirty percent reading, reading rate, which is good. Actually, that's, that's pretty decent. I just. Am spoiled because it used to be fifty, but that was, my list was smaller, right? And as your list gets bigger. Your percentage of read newsletters will go down. That's just how it's gonna work. I'm sorry. But I can pull this open and be like, oh my gosh, somebody, somehow I got on a blacklist, so let me take care of that if I can, you know. I can, oh, these, these links are not working well or, or, you know, different things. What's a format? It'll, it'll tell me if my. If I have too many images balanced to my. Text or too many links for the amount of text I have or something, but things that will be common spam triggers. So, yeah, so. There is a free level of this. That's what I'm using and it gives you just a couple of checks a day. That's fine. I don't send more than that many newsletters in a day, right? So this, you can use this at the free level and it's great. So I did want to share that today. So. All right. And then I'll come back and where's my edit newsletter? Yeah, let's not, definitely not send it when it's that kind of sketched out. Yeah, so. Oh, and I'll, we'll see if I can. Can I share? Yeah, here's my. Summer camp articles in progress. So I'm proud of some, some pretty, pretty pictures. I do have some of these prompts are for the poet's eye, which is the serial. Poet's Eye world and the others are in the Shard of a Long world. So I'm, I'm working on both of those. So I know Shyred Fox is doing summer camp. LJ, are you doing summer camp? I don't think Grace is summer camping. Yeah, I'm at like thirteen, I think. So I'm feeling pretty good. If you're not familiar with summer camp, I don't think everybody. Drinks the World Anvil Kool-Aid. It's hard. But yeah, if you're not familiar with summer camp, they are world building prompts. And yeah, we are doing at least three hundred words on each prompt. And there are thirty one prompts in the month of July, so that works out to one a day. And so far it's July thirteenth and I have thirteen, so. Holding up. We'll see. I might fall behind because I am going to a conference. And if that happens, then I'll just have to play catch up at the end of the month. So, but I do like that there are tiered. Successes. So you can do, I'm gonna do ten, I'm gonna do twenty, I'm gonna do thirty, I'm gonna do thirty one. do, I'm going to do 10, I'm going to do 20, I'm going to do 30, I'm going to do 31. So you can actually get, uh, a digital badge for each, each of those. And of course, we will do anything for the digital badges because gamification works. So, yeah, it's good Kool-Aid, Shiread says. Yeah. So, yeah. How are you doing, Shai? What's, what's your, uh, what's your account right now? I, I don't think I'm putting you on the spot and embarrassing you because I think you actually have been doing pretty well. Okay. Don't post anything on World Anvil and you don't do Nano either. Okay. Yeah. Um, both of those are tools that I am very big into. You use the tool and the way that it works for you, right? So, um, so yeah, Nano, I have, I, I like Nano. I like some concepts from Nano. There's some other things that I think people try to misuse Nano for, but that's, you know, I just hit my own little soapbox. But yeah, both of those are some years I do Nano serves me best because I do my own thing, right? So there you go. 14 submitted. Sweet. So Shai is actually ahead of me, but it doesn't matter because we only compete against ourselves. Okay. So, all right. Um, yeah. So before I go back to my newsletter and, um, and actually like back to packing things into boxes to, to drive to St. Louis tomorrow, um, does any have any questions or comments about, uh, Bella cereal or Patreon-ing? Or actually, I, you know what? I would totally take advice on any of those, um, especially on the Patreon-ing. I am, the, the idea of launching my Patreon just absolutely, um, scares me. Let me hop over. Having Patreon. So I went crazy and I made six levels. But I just have to show you that, you know, these, like, I just had to have a little red and black evil wizard. So there we go. Oh, you love Patreon. Oh, great. You, you are probably, I don't care if you're fairly novice. You're ahead of me. So there we go. So, um, yeah, Ko, Ko-fi memberships are coffee memberships. Sorry. I can't, I, I, I don't know how that's actually pronounced. I know it's supposed to be coffee, but anyway, yeah, that is another one that I looked at. And honestly, it's one that if you have, like, when I did the math, if you have a lot of supporters, coffee is the way to go. You will actually get to keep more of your money. Um, but I am not enough of a household name that I made the decision to go with Patreon for its brand recognition. Not that coffee is not known, just that I think a lot of people think first of Patreon. Um, coffee is very definitely, you know, a known and trustworthy thing. So, yeah, I don't know how to say it either. Thank you. Yeah. Yes. Kofi, and you can't tell me otherwise. Okay, I'm, I'm good. That's, yeah. Kate, I'm not going to argue with Kate. That's probably the original Latin, isn't it, Kate? Yeah, it's definitely the original Latin. Yeah. Latin for caffeine in a cup. Okay. Um, so, yeah. And I will just say that I was setting, setting this up and I just had, you know, the tiers there and I asked in, um, on a, on a forum, like, hey, guys, I've never, I'm not good at this. I'm not good at this. I've never done this before. Any advice you have? And, um, somebody told me to put, uh, images on my, on my tiers. So that is the piece of advice I got. So I will pass that along. And, um, I just think it added like, it made it like 600% cooler, you know? And then I had great fun, like finding little icons to put on there. So that's it. But yeah, I just get to, uh, get to hang out and have a good time. Yes, I know that Vikings don't actually have those stupid horned helmets. Okay, but it's a little stampy icon. So we're going to roll with it. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Um, that's, that's completely fair about, uh, don't let, you know, what Patreon is doing. And yeah, and the thing is like I, and I'm in a lot of, I, I hang out in a lot of different places on the internet. And, um, you know, and so I, I keep hearing all different things, but a lot of them are, some things are more substantiated rumor than others. So, um, so one of the, one was, you know, people were talking about, oh, you can't go with Patreon because they, uh, you know, they have these ideological restrictions and, you know, and they will shut you down. And I'm like, the only people I'm aware of them shutting down were neo Nazis. So I'm, don't think I'm likely to fall into that category. So, yeah, but, um, but yeah, there's, there, no, there's, there's definitely reasons to go with different platforms and, um, and this is just where I'm experimenting with right now. I'm not going to pretend that it is the best way to do things. So there we go. Okay. Um, all right. Well, I have a whole vendor table to pack and find, I gotta find some things for it. So I'm gonna head off in that direction. Oh, sorry. Rewards that people get additional access to, oh, to your Discord. Okay. And, um, oh, signed editions. Yay. Yeah, that's, that's good. I do have paperbacks at my highest tier. So, um, I just need to emphasize that that is not a monthly benefit because I am not one of those writers who puts out a whole new paperback a month. It's not going to happen. I'm sorry. Never. So, yeah, but those are, those are good ideas. Yes. Yeah, mine has Discord benefits, but I'm not sure that my Discord is cool enough for that actually to count as a benefit. So, uh, but I do intend to have, um, lots of time. So poet's eye, which is the cereal that, um, I'm doing now, which you get cereal access up here. So let's, let's move away from the, from the, from the wizards. Um, and, uh, not a monthly for sure. I know, right? But there are people who do that and that is just not ever going to be me. Um, but, but anyway, poet's eye is, is one where there are so many in-jokes. Like I read it and I think it's hilarious because I know like, you know, oh, this is a reference to. Um, I will tell you guys, since you're here, just, just between us, um, eventually I will explain this on like a Patreon chat or something. So it's not super secret, but nobody knows it yet out in the great wide world. Uh, but this entire story took place because I took one classic late nineties anime and took the, the heroes and, you know, another classic nineties anime and took the antagonists and I threw them each at each other, um, in a third world and, and here we go. And this is it. And so there are so many reference jokes and there are so many, um, you know, little just things that, you know, I'm hopeful, hopefully the story is coherent on its own. But then if you know, you're like, aha, you said jellyfish. Okay. Like it's, you know, it's, it's, uh, there. So I'm going to be explaining like those kinds of things. Patreon's going to be like, here's a little peek behind the curtain. Um, let me talk about why this scene ended up the way it is. Oh yeah. Also, we get into some themes, um, later on. And so these are the things that I'm trying to do with that. And, um, and here's some real world information about this and, you know, that kind of stuff. So, um, yeah, there we go. That's, that's, uh, where we're hanging out. Um, so it'll be a benefit thing eventually. Yay. All right. So, yeah, I keep saying I'm getting off, then I keep talking. Probably that's me procrastinating because I don't really want to fill some more boxes. We'll see. So, um, but yeah, thanks for hanging out, guys. I, uh, I appreciate you being flexible in my, in my stream this week while I get stuff done. And I, I still, like I said, I still do consider this a learn with me because this is 100% me just going, let's try this and see what happens. Yeah. I have no idea where Bella's going to go. I have no idea if this Patreon's going to go anywhere. Um, it's, why, I have two big reasons why I've not done a Patreon for the last three and a half years of thinking about it. One is commitment issues. Like if I promise people stuff on the, in a monthly basis, then what happens if I miss a month? Well, obviously I'll just suspend, suspend it for a month. Okay. Like that's, that's not an insurmountable problem. Um, and then the other is, but what if nobody wants to do it? There's no way around that except to just do it, right? That's, that's the thing. So, all right. Yeah, no, thanks for hanging out, guys. I really do appreciate that. And, um, and yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll let you know how this goes. Like, like this is a learn, this is only learning if I share the results. So we'll do that. So that is it. And I'm going to go throw things in boxes and I will see you guys next week. Take care. Have an awesome evening for some of you, mornings for others of you. So I love, I love this living in an international world. Everybody take care. Bye.